Yeah, I mean, where's, where, you and I are good, from what we've discussed. But there's also been some other things come to light since our meeting. So, I'm not gonna really be discussing them tonight, I'm gonna be focusing on what we discussed. And then, after that, we can go further and further discussions, if need be, like we did before. So, now that I know I have an open door and sit down, that's, that's fine. But I, I think that they need to be aware of what's been happening, at least with this situation. And then there's, like I said, I've come to light with, he's already, he's already introduced himself. And now we have Carolina Rodriguez, which is much bigger activist than myself, so. So, she's got about a hundred thousand subscribers just on her YouTube channel. Um, I don't know exactly what she's going to be speaking about, but there is one of my problems, that's Anderson. Something else has come to light on her this week, so, we'll be discussing that, um. What is your, what does your schedule look like? Cause I don't wanna come down if you're busy and stuff, you know, only when you have time. Next week. Yeah, I mean, I, I come, I come up here a couple of days a week, I'm, I'm only about thirty minutes to an hour away. So, um, but there's some other things that have come to light since our, it's just, it, it's funny, it's cause I thought it was isolated before I came to you. Just, it seems like one breadcrumb after another, after another, after another, and it's like, whoa, how far does this really go? So, but since you, since you've been kind with open dialogue, I'd like to at least let you know there is more, and I will be talking with you regarding that, when you, when we can set something up, okay? Oh yeah, and I'm, I'm, yup, I've already signed up, um, I mean, it should be a normal, typical, other, I don't know if this is your normal outcome. I think this, from what I hear, is actually a bigger outcome than you guys normally have. Public people, yeah, would turn out, yeah, or is this normal? Oh, okay, um, do you know how many speakers you have tonight? I know there's three of us, that, okay, so, hold on. Okay, okay, yeah, like I said, I, I, I can either call your office and we'll set something up, that's not a problem. Alright, perfect, thank you, Megan.
Next item on the agenda is the interest statement, this is a personal wish to address the council. We have a couple here, uh, first one is Mr. Kebler. Miss Kebler, I'm sorry. Good. Uh, please state your name, and, uh, please understand, uh, please note your comments for three minutes, and council cannot respond to any questions you may have.
Good evening, council members, I am Mary P. Lee. My name is Amy Hall, and I speak today not today to myself, but for everybody who is aware of the identity of this home, granted, it is our legal account. People who are too often yours, harassed, or treated unadroitly. As it is a current situation, I consider this a difficult struggle, uh, very often, due to alcohol dependence. Boy or a girl, you may have to often listen to mass, or to make a decision. You have a free course in our two-sided versus city act of 405 U.S. 2016. Shut down vague cases of law because they allow officers to perform personal charges, not as dangerous. And whilst one person's city avoid you, reports as criminal homelessness, when those others will turn this to this value-keeping man. That's exactly the kind of abuse I experience. I was at Lowe's because, mind you, when I was old, I don't say, there was no policy limits, the man there made this by all the progress. I wouldn't care how long it took. That's not quality, that's full quality, it's classified, based, against discrimination, plain and simple. After leaving the property, in giving a loan over to that business, I was confronted by a horrible limiter. She is named without legal cause, and very unfair, and takes people's lives, and they go to plan out what's required for their life. That's false, and federal versus state judicial court ruling is clear objective. You're only entitled to identify if you are a law-abiding resident. And seeing that legal duty, lawful laws, doesn't trigger that answer. Nor was there a valid authority for people called area of law, to issue a legal case at home, based on hearsay, or private activity, they'll be acquitted. Former woman, and boss me, calling me, one of those poor people, and they will find me in the law court. She even dispossessed my father of the plane, and also, also targeted, he waited up to the end of the week. That fits the fundamental, it's valid, you know, that's the whole standard of law court in front of us. And then there is our law, who states, "You're playing, plus we know the right to follow." That's literally incorrect, and the federal court, he then has, playing, playing the game, made, verbally, being rather unselfish, and without authority, regular, general, remind us of all this conduct, that we, that we, regardless of power, that is true. Council on party action, updating, sharing, and distribu-, distributor law school, and then eliminating errors. To report, to report, to get, doesn't, they want to get, shouldn't, be on the wall, and counsel status, and, and law, so, so.
Uh, next person wishing to address the council, Carolina Rodriguez.
Don't forget your gimbal.
Religion for the same month. And then we'll just go from there. So the timeline to leave within a couple of weeks. I mean, long as it would have the council maybe three weeks at most. So that timeline, I want to be clear.
That was my initial thought. We weren't making it hard because our very, because two months on.
Again, this is the second period, the second reading. So I would like to have anyone in the audience that would like to address item number ten on the agenda.
Do we hear you?
Uh, I think you can speak now.
Okay, I'll try. Going back through the mural ordinance that I was receiving from Cheryl, there were two concerning things that I feel like could potentially make it a little longer and increase the duration of the murals for future. Looking at the standards for wall placement and removal, item number four. Does each wall of mural should be secured in a manner that will require a metal or care to the wall after removal of the mural? There was suggestion from all the research that I've done that any kind of panel should be attached to a morgue or not masonry. And that seems to be something very important to maintain this work aspect of the building integrity. So that is something in one of my research that would be highly encouraged to add. In the same section, number eight, letter C, it looks like all surface cleaning of the portion of the wall mural or underlying wall adjacent shall use a means that will not disturb the features color, texture, other visual qualities, accelerate deterioration, or otherwise improve the structure. The previous one mentioned sandblasting, and a common way of cleaning the surface is power washing. It may be helpful to limit the power washing to two hundred PSI or oil damage ability. Looking at page six of eight, I'm not sure if it was the error in the one that I received, but there was a complete page five and the synchronous ordinance, so I'm not sure if it's just missing from this document or if it's missing in general, but there's no page five on the one I received. The enforcement section, it looks like if there's a violation of any of the listed items, including, you know, peeling from a mural, that is properly, I'm not sure what we're doing, any kind of impairment to the actual mural, will then go back to the building owner. And they can actually be charged for the misdemeanor and they'll fix it within thirty days. That to me feels a little extreme. I'm also wondering, is the city going to be willing to maintain these murals, which is a common thing in other towns nearby? The funding has primarily been by donation and grants. The local arts league has been completely advocating, and I think they're pretty much doing well, really working to see this thing happen. There are some other towns that are known for their murals, like Long Path, California. They currently have thirty-five murals and are the highest drawl town of all rural areas in the US. And they were successful in raising funds by doing a roundup for murals on their water mills, which was just a voluntary thing that can be done to help increase the funding. As we're finding out with the mural submissions, we've got some for what, fifty grand? Like, these are not cheap things, and these are things that will bring people to town. I know that we're currently looking at the comprehensive plan. One area part of the economic development could be considered city funding for murals that would increase tourism or maybe matching contributions to the donations and grants. But this was a ten-year process for this town just to come up with the funding, and then an additional thirteen years to complete thirty-five murals. So it took them twenty-something years to make this happen. I'm not really hoping at that time, so I'm hoping to get this going a little faster. But the future fundraising, once they make a money for the murals, they then will be taking that fundraising for the maintenance of the murals. Because that is a costly endeavor, as we continue to look at it aging correctly. I think that was everything for the enforcement section, but it just seemed that it's putting back all of the ownership on the owner of the building. And the city is requiring all these things, but not really helping to maintain its aspect, so, or even the funding aspect. Additional issues, number five on the new mural item, letter A. Number two, it suggests that bricks should not be painted on using the moisture trap within a brick, which is traditionally true. Although I'm not sure the age of our buildings, prior to eighteen seventy, there are no forest bricks that actually do need paint to protect it. So depending on the age of the building, paint can actually protect the building and increase its longevity. And then, number three on that item for murals, it says that they can last a long time as long as they do not cover all the bricks, which is true. About fifty percent of the mural coverage will leave a breathable room. Any more than fifty percent will cause issues with the moisture that we've seen. There's also products that are breathable masonry paints, like lime wash paints, that would be great, and they don't necessarily have to be sealed, and they tend to repair themselves. This is the same material that was used in brick for many, many years. And you will see this self-healing brick that have lime in it, and the lime was actually part of the process that will make it long-lasting. And still breathable. The last item I had, I believe, was on the next page, number four, under the new mural section. Specifically, the best advice has been to paint the mural on a separate panel and not onto the building. That is definitely a desirable method. I'm wondering if we need to clarify the types of materials that should be used. There are three that I researched that are the best materials possible to make sure that the mural will last a long time. An aluminum composite panel, generally one-four inch is the minimum. That is the most desirable material that can be used. The second, it would be the medium-density overlay or a plywood panel. They tend to age less well, but they are a little more durable. And then finally, an option that isn't really addressed in here anywhere is called a non-woman media, which is basically like a parachute power. The great thing about this is for larger scale murals, like the one that we're looking at, is fifteen by thirty, that's really high up for any human. So this material can actually have the mural printed on it. And it's breathable material, it's already concealed, and you can just apply it to the building with a breathable acrylic film adhesive. Polytab is the most common in this country, and is the best brand of building. So that would be an option that would be an alternative to panels, but is still not considered painting, that would be very desirable and very affordable, and would last for a long time. We talked about the touch and mortar, masonry. I think that's it for me, but if you have any questions on murals, we've been doing a lot of research in village and villages, so we can hear you before the meeting. Thank you.
So, any comments?
I wanted to make sure I remember to do everything. I have not painted my work here, too. Yes.
And the balance that I usually try to strike is to be as only as necessary to protect the common interest and not to get into the business of requiring a particular tax incentive or particular tax on materials when that should be the property owners. Yeah, that's up to the property owners. There's plenty of their projects. But there is a lot in what scratchers always suggested, and it would not be in the book read to not take action and just review all of those recommendations piece by piece. There may be additional thoughts that we will have for the evening tonight.
Oh, I'm sorry. Anybody else in the audience that would like to address this?
Well, I have a quick question, I think, here. The historic overlay, some of the buildings that we are in talks with, that our sort of talks with to do murals, you know, the building owner, their buildings are not necessarily historic buildings, but that's what my question is. Where, is there an actual era that comes that are we going to have to consider for that as we're looking at possible?
Thanks for asking a question. I thought it was not showing the map yet. So this map shows how the downtown historic district and the masonry overlay. So there's a gray line on this, uh, this grayish line is in front of these mountains. And then I'll point it here. That gray line is in the mountains, and then the areas that are outlined in blue with the hashtag show the areas covered by the historical cultural landmark preservation overlay in the downtown historic district. So if this property is not covered by the overlay, then that mural will need approval for management. If it's covered by the overlay, then it would need a certificate of approach and historical protection also.
Is this available right now?
Absolutely. I can look at the video, if you can, or if you have it for you, just whatever that you would prefer to talk about.
I have a question, actually. I know in the mural ordinance, the reading that had mentioned that paint was not going to be recommended for murals on historic buildings. I'm wondering, is that a good belief that the order that painted? Because there are some buildings that are already painted, but then not make any difference if the building is on top of that.
The proposed ones doesn't go into that much detail. If the brick had already been painted, that would be a little bit of a different circumstance, and it's just the actual brick that's still exposed. Yeah. That's something we take into account.
Well, I would tend to, I heard what Megan said about maybe not taking action immediately. Is that what you're saying about the target here?
Yeah, so one of the options that the council has, the council could go ahead and approve the ordinance. They could approve the ordinance with a change, but we heard a bunch of things. So probably too many to put in a form of motion. So another thing that they could do is they could not take action tonight, and then review the list of things that were suggested to be considered, and then staff can make some recommendations about those, and they can get a beginning to these.
Well, I would certainly be all for it. Waiting, you know, doing a little more research, and more, helping more ordinance committees and work anyway. It sounds like this is our first time doing the ordinance, maybe we do anything about it.
Anybody else in the audience that would like to have a comment on this? Here in the closed public hearing, maybe say so to the council. Moving on to the next agenda item, hold the phone here in forty-three, in the gray on the ordinance, accepting the recommendations of the plan and zoning commission to amend the terms of the two thousand seven zoning ordinance, known as ordinance number oh two thousand seven dash zero one dash zero one, for the purposes of amendment from the new schedule. And table I added recreational vehicles, resort, and to define recreational vehicles.
We need your counsel. A letter was submitted requesting that the city consider amending the text of the zoning ordinance to allow for recreational vehicles, resorts. So the planning and zoning commission reviewed the proposed text amendment at their meeting on Monday, April twenty-eighth. And this, these are the amendments that were considered to the zoning ordinance. So first, defining, and are we resort to being silly for recreational vehicles offering a range of amendments and designing a short-term tourist destination. So this is set apart from what specifically thought of as a park. And then this is for more of a tourist destination. This is the, in the discussion that has several mandates. That the person from the victim that submitted the letter, that asked if we would consider this also a homeless night and not give them any questions on the difference between recreational vehicles, resorts that we thought of. Also, on that ordinance was requiring a specific use permit and four different general classifications applicable for residential, light industrial, bedroom, industrial, and commercial. Then also requiring supplemental conditions that would require site planning and city areas to open and submit. The planning and zoning commission mentioned that they reviewed this, ultimately they recommended approval of it. But there was some discussion on the definition of needing to be more detailed or provide destination. There was some discussion on conditional language to kind of establish some kind of precedent. So that would be consistent across those requests. Ultimately, it was recommended for approval and determined that we should be looked at on a Friday basis. And we do have a couple of little work on the planning and zoning commission that were at the meeting that it would be more than half, especially that there. And we've got the person that, from the company who submitted the letter, requested a change also in that.
This is the person here holding up, open the public hearing. Anyone in the audience that would like to address agenda item number eleven? Any questions for the recreational vehicles?
Hello? Hi, my name is Paul Struck. I'm at one of the five banks with Dr. Paul Tatchy. I'm with the community, we're getting the developer. So a little bit of background, if you guys are going to be on, we acquired the, uh, the, uh, the agency through, uh, our, uh, our, uh, foundation last October. And they included some, uh, past additional land, uh, in the area of the park. Really excited, hopefully able to work against the command in the next couple of months on completion and renovation of the store. I hope that in the time store where everybody, uh, throw up, hopefully can be driven over after with more, uh, plans of the future on energy. We kind of specialize in travel centers. We own the Texas Best Store, Travel Center, Italy, and we also have one in Charleston. So come by South Island, some of the key, so on. But we're, uh, we are, we have additionally in the back of five or six acres, a sort of system, a little bit higher than the property. And they'll move on that, a, uh, are we resort would be the best potential use for that. There's reasonably, given any of the compensation that these people have, another living, you know, the park. But this is to be intended to drawn folks that come up down thirty-five, up the chase, drawn folks that went to the lake. There was a couple of us in the park's various qualities outside of the city limits in the county. And so what we're asking to do is to have the right to come in and apply for this to be. We were, uh, we're here closing the staff to make sure that landscaping, the amendment, and this service is the work of the resort. It's going to be exactly what the city would want, and so I feel part of the location. And ultimately, our goal is, uh, set aside all of these folks driving there, in these days, they'll be, so like seventy, eight hundred thousand dollars. All of these folks driving around, being able to stop and spend their money here. Those were hopefully our store, but these men, but these are some of ours. So this is the first step for us to be able to apply for this to be. So I hope you guys consider this approval. So, uh, obviously, you guys, uh, we, we need very much. Do you have any questions or thoughts?
Anyone else in the audience that have a difference in specifically agenda?
There were two major concerns, and my name is Johnny, and we discussed lots of them. It feels a little longer here. Short-term was something that we felt like could be some clarification, uh, because it's kind of a great area that could be used potentially. So we don't want to be super restrictive, but we also don't want this resort to turn into a park. And that's the question, is what is the difference? So we really were trying to define the parameters and clarify park versus resort. But there's an dimension that really isn't even a specificity in the ordinances where this would fit. So we just, I really just want to make sure you guys are aware of this as a discussion piece. And it's still a concern, even though we didn't all say yay, it was a yay question mark. So the other concern is if there were to be a change of ownership, would we have to have them reapply for specific use permit again? Because again, change of ownership could be change of use, and that gets into again, great areas that not really sure are going to address unless there were a complaint from a citizen, and then that would be a reinforcement issue. But not sure if anything could really be clarified to make that a little more precise. But that was our basic concerns in the end.
If I could respond to just a couple of things. Yeah, so for a couple of items we brought up, what was addressed, were those could be conditions. So the planning and zoning commission or the council, we're, we're, we do have to really add conditions on specific permit. Does it include on resolution that approves that specific permit? And so both of those could be included as conditions on each individual permit on that case by a basis.
Hey, that, uh, three thousand concerns, wouldn't it, oh, yeah, very, very big concerns, uh, briefly, one, no problem. If I feel like it's maybe a little bit more appropriate, but of course, if you want to have some kind of change of ownership clause or conditions there. My family's on a couple of their years, they're so old and they're a little way over. And so, uh, so that's not necessarily a concern for us. I would say, you know, of course, I know that that's why we have the ordinance, landscaping plans, and so on. So that if we go away or whatever happens, you know, the same requirements, which we would, we would, and so on. Any successful owner would have to meet those. The second idea is in terms of, it's long-term versus short-term. I typically consider monthly. You know, the difference is that a, are we, like, a pillar of ours that people live, typically they'll offer monthly and hourly. It's proposed to stay there. We don't intend to do that. We would intend to offer daily at the variable suite. They're supposed to be there, and we would, I would strongly encourage them to put in there, to build a big two to three. So we're only going to be there at forty, we would be, um, artists. So we would quite have a room to go to and do their stand. If somebody wants to live somewhere, uh, I'm pretty confident we're going to be the least affordable option.
I have one question. Are you putting an age limit, like, a pillar of ours that mine has been on, right, to figure that are we, that are we cannot be more than ten years of our, if they didn't ship a son of a no of what it looks like? And part of that is to maintain certain appearance and consider even like that. I mean, I think that makes a big difference.
Yeah, honestly, I have a part of that. I would, I would like to probably ask for the, uh, you willing to, you know, to decide how to go. I frequently find that in any development, we do that, the problems we expect to have, and the ones we have, and then there's unexpected problems that we've got there on, on sort of other. I don't have an issue with that, you know, generally. And maybe that's what we get, if you're trying to keep your staff in the case of that SGP discussion, having to have to consider that. But it is a perspective, honestly. Oh, and then, by the way, we frequently, though, we did one of our calls in the law, that murals have their locations, most of them are the old shop center. So she wanted some higher furniture, and we paid for it, so we would have to pay for it, of course. And so if there is somebody, uh, there is a muralist or somebody in the city, we'd be delighted to look at some mural to the city on a Friday basis. I feel that I think that's great, hopefully people go there and they can fit in that bicycle.
Hey, wives in the audience, I'd like to address this specifically agenda item number eleven. Here in the closed public hearing, if you want the agenda item twelve, here in the glory, I'll see you anyway.
These projects on some projects are below and built from, not super stock. Head special to the owner of the not super stock, who gave us said they approved the series operations. He wants to develop future business uses, so he's going to cool game plans and address issues that. So hopefully we'll have to work that out. Amigos, staff that have been owners, they're providing media for the building official, and they'll start working on those a lot. Anyone on the call, they have finished the, uh, the state. Fire alarm system is completed. There's no official opening day. Law markets started here tomorrow. Staff has completed several plumbing inspections. Maybe we'll start construction for the fire away in our best person. There we have building in Spanish Doorway, May fifteenth, here at Historic Hall sixteen. Staff will have one house to present. Those are operations welcome back. I thank you, buddy, for the refreshments. Reception just before the council meeting, appreciate that. Curve cleanup, usually whatever, pause that initiative. Around these other parts, the construction is almost finished. The store is completely fine. May sixteen, in terms of the, to the rocks, currently we don't have a official opening there. So this is our storage, they're toward the project we've had. Some big leaves were able to fill the second from the first location position, they start a little behind.
Sorry, while you were talking about that, should I have to take it along?
Yes, with the proposed date, it was June second. Sort of tactical one, which is responsible and equitable growth. Thank you, Richard, for updating me with this, uh, development projects that are at some point in the pipeline. You can see those numbers have greatly increased because we're trying to be very diligent about putting numbers behind each thing that has a strong possibility of coming over. So this would include property that has sold for the purposes of development, and we have you know enough about it to have numbers solicited. But as you can see, they're all in very state and celebrating us actually delivered. That total is a pretty big total, so just over two-six-hundred new simple family houses. Or we currently have about thirty-one hundred simple family houses on the ground right now, so this is the amount of additional permits to save. It does not include about two-hundred sixty units more than that. Obviously, this is going to lead us to some significant choices, which is the whole point of the alternate planning. Goal two, there's a foster transparency and connection. As you know, we're going to be seeing these websites, the new website will be easier to use, you can find what they need. That's about to be ready for that last kind of pollings. We've also spent a lot of time working through the new budget software, which will have an online interface allowing those of the public to click on stuff, kind of interact through the budget so that they can find out, you know, essentially how their checks are being sent. And it gives us the ability to include features and explanations, and, and I call it a budget story, kind of finished component part of. a budget story, kind of, which component part of, that is, it's difficult to know what they're looking at and, and satisfy themselves in terms of their questions. Uh, we also continue to use a whole, um, whole different, also media track that's worked out, have to consider initiatives, actually receive input, um, from people with questions or concerns, um, and, and have to teach, make, maybe there's a meeting like this in the months. And then goal four is to deliberate officially in front of government. I want to shout out our city secretary, um, for pulling off another municipal election, for happy, um, with that, and all the processes flowing. Please, always please, um, hold the election, always please, when the election's finished. So that's, that's where we still have that conference in place, as you know, we took that off last week. Um, and there's been, uh, apparently input collected, but I would just encourage people who has not filled out survey one, um, there are, there are going to be three surveys in the, in the whole process. So survey one is just kind of where we're starting to be saying, what are your impressions of the city at this point? What are the things that you think are the most important? And that's really, really valuable as the city includes where we're trying to make decisions, what are we protecting? We want to do it based on what our citizens think is most important. So, so at least it takes, you know, five, ten minutes to fill out, please do it. Um, and then there will be a second survey in another month or so. Uh, and the final survey is specifically around businesses. So, um, we want everybody to go with the first two surveys, and you might even have to fill out a third survey, so, um, sorry to interrupt. Um, the rest of this goal is for you right now, constantly having collaboration and having , uh, consistency across departments, uh, including, um, employee position and a professional developer. Uh, we continue to do customer service training for our offices and basic employees, um, to be the best equipped. And then our app coming in, we got sure of that, it's not amazing, and you're excited, and there's a lot of, of, of that's on that lines, we're pretty good, we, they have to then, and certainly expect that. Uh, any questions?
Next up on the agenda, hold a closed session, we're divisional section.
Thank you for the three-dollar gift bottle.
So, this is nice to meet you in the press, but she's not going to send any questions to you.
What's that?
She's first.
By the way, uh, it'll be right there. Her husband, her husband was ripped out of the car with a face maker by that sergeant on the twenty-second, six days after. That sergeant over there?
What's the sergeant?
The black one in the corner?
The woman?
Yeah, hey, that one right there, that lady right there, her husband did show up, but her and the, the girl she was training, that you were speaking to. They both ripped the old man or the face maker out of the car because he was trying to take a, for the legal dumping. And he wasn't even allowed, he didn't even hear.
It was probably.
They were trying to use a, they asked.
They pinched his house or what?
They tried to, put him shoulder, asking for a location, maybe give up a business card, and they were like, they're taking him out of the car and just trying to.
Just tell my name.
They didn't try to, but it was just a red. And you tried to tell? Yeah, they tried, I got a face maker.
That's always true. Time, that woman did that.
So now's the time to go ruffle the feathers with the sergeant. I'm probably going to get kicked out of here arrested, so hang on, hang tight. Hey, guys, why shake your hands? Y'all the real heroes.
They rip people out when they claim they're resisting arrest on illegal dumping charges and everything else. She yelled at me the other day. Great, you just keep licking her boots. Suck them, great. Suck that leather right off her boot. Anderson, badge number two-three-four. I believe it's two-three-four. She's training guard, it's not harassment. She's a public servant. You just keep licking them boots, sir. I'm glad somebody does. You guys, real heroes, like I said. Go ahead, go take my picture. I know, I know you want to. It's all over the internet. Soon as I get your disciplinary records back, they will be for twelve years on the department here. I've already been investigating you, guard. Should have never wrote that, should have never wrote that citation for no seatbelt the other day, too, on that trucker. Bad cop, no doughnut, no doughnut. Go ahead, your turn. Hey, I know exactly the last time she falsified one, April twenty-second. Bootlicker, right there. He's happy about licking them boots. Hey, guys, you at the fire department, be safe. You're causing the trouble, shut your mouth. Open mouth, insert foot, have a nice day, sir. Have a nice day, sir. Nah, she didn't want to answer mine the other day, she said she was on the phone with dispatch. She, she's un-Christian-like. Hey, Demart, back up, I want to get her on the thumbnail, not you. Great thumbnail, there we go. You done?
Are you a artist? This, this person who works for the newspaper?
No, 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 ma'am. Ma'am, I have a question for you, I'm sorry. Now, I noticed you were live on that phone. Where does that livestream go? Oh, okay, I saw a red bar, just assumed you were live.
I just check out the likes.
Okay.
I can, should I?
She can't comment.
But I check out.
Okay, and then where, and then where do you upload them at? Uh, for the city, okay, hold on. How long does that normally take you to, to get it up there?
About a week or two.
Okay.
But it's because I've been watching.
I, I never, I never said.
And, uh, you have editing video.
I'm just, I, I'm just asking so I can download the shot that you got of me because I was using the camera facing.
It's, um, you're not editing yourself.
Yeah, I do, we do our own editing, we, we get it.
So, that, that takes me about.
The, the easiest, the easiest way to do that is if you've got Clipchamp, it's free. There's a, there's a noise suppression button and it just drops all the background noise.
So that's what we're, that's what I do, is I go in.
Do our own editing, so, just a little trick. Like I said, I, I, we're, we're, we're here to ruffle certain feathers, not all feathers. But I, I just wanted to know so I knew where to go get it later.
I shared your, uh, city Facebook page.
Okay, okay. Is that the, not, so it's not the Department of Public Safety one? It's, um.
It's the Department of Public Safety.
City government, okay. Yeah, because I, I don't think I'm, I don't think I'm on that Facebook page, I'm on the Department of Public Safety one, so. And I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name.
Christine Ward.
Ms. Ward, okay, thank you very much, appreciate that.
Yeah.
Yeah, no problem, no problem.
Like I said, you know, people like editing, they understand that, but I need to text them.
I've got to, I got to go where I normally would hang. Um, I do know, I, I, I've talked to Megan, um, I wasn't sure if she had, the city council wanted to meet with me personally, but she has my, I believe she has my contact info. Um, I know the PD has it through the records department, but I can always reach out to Megan, so.
As long as they recall, I'm not the.
Yeah, okay, yeah, no worries.
I'm communicating with them.
Okay, so you're over at the annex, or the, not the annex, but the administration board. Okay, perfect. Oh, you're the one in the corner? Then you saw me over there, I had a full beard going that day. Okay, perfect, thank you, Ms. Ward, appreciate you. All right, ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls, children of all ages. Carolina, you think we ruffled them feathers?
Yeah.
Hey, before you went over there, I think I struck a nerve on that, on that Sergeant Anderson.
That lady?
The sergeant, female sergeant?
I didn't know that the guy sitting there, that guy was chief. And he's just a man.
Hey, guys, I'm going to go ahead and end this livestream, the rest of it, they're in closed meeting right now, don't know how long that'll take, but it'll be up on their city website when I get a chance to download it, so I will see you guys on the next video.